All right, I'd like to welcome you all to this Region 12 Board of Education meeting, November 7, 2016, in accordance with the protocol that we adopted regarding taping of meetings. I'll notify the board that the board is being taped by Mr. Boniudo, who's present. Rebecca, would you take attendance, please?
Anthony Amato.
Here.
Valerie Anderson.
Here.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Gregory Cava.
Rebecca Devine, I'm here.
Michelle Gora.
Here.
James Hirschfield.
Yes.
Stephanie Kolnick.
Here.
Jennifer Pody.
Lisa Rousch.
Michael Sinatra.
Here.
Peter Tagley.
Okay, thank you, we're all here except for two. All right, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who wants to comment on any agenda items? Yes?
Yes, John Boniudo, Washington. And you're gonna have to excuse me, but I'm gonna talk about Agenda Item 7.6. I'm not certain what -- I know the second reading of the policy is tonight, but I'm not certain what the policy is, but so if I -- and in state statute concerning FOI Section 1-226, Part 2, concerning conduct of public meetings, videotaping and audiotaping of public meetings is allowed, subject only to reasonable rules to prevent disruption.
Mr. Boniudo, you have been permitted to tape the meetings without a problem. I allow that.
Okay. So without asking permission, or?
The board is permitted to set reasonable regulation as to how it works, but the statute allows a person to do it, as long as they're not disruptive, and they're recognized, and that's what you've done. So I don't know what the complaint is.
We have a second reading tonight.
Yes, I understand, okay.
Why a policy after 45 years of having -- conducting meetings? It's just--
Because it's suddenly come before us, as an issue.
So what is the policy, then? Are you gonna explain that later?
We have it for a second reading on our agenda, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address this? All right, not seeing anyone, then I'll move on. Consent Agenda, which is --
I apologize.
Consent Agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the October 17, 2016 education meeting, the retreat meeting on October 24, and then 3.2, the field trip to New York City, grades 10 through 12. Is there anyone who desires to remove anything from the consent agenda? Not seeing anyone, the consent agenda's -- oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Val.
3.2, Catalanian, United States, Chapag. Are you going to stay?
No, 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 no.
You're learning that?
May I?
Yes, briefly, yes.
Students are going to 360 Lexington Avenue in New York City. They will learn about the independence movement in Catalonia and its culture, and it is Mr. Nolan's class. He is a Spanish teacher at Chapag.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, and the consent agenda's approved. Report of the Chair, I just wanted to point out Sean Parker of Chapag, who won the Berkshire League, and then the Class S State Championship in cross-country. Unbelievable, and he led the team to a second-place state finish. So I wanted to congratulate him, it was tremendous accomplishment, and we're all very proud of him. Absolutely, I just wanted to mention that. Congratulations to Sean, and thank you. Okay, all right, Superintendent's report, Dr. Castino.
Yes, I wanted to just mention to the board, we do have a retreat on March 13, and I thought it would be a nice idea to invite either Bob Raider or someone from CAPE to really work on the roles of the board and the roles of the superintendent as a topic, so I just wanted to put that out there. If anyone had a problem, just let me know, I haven't made those arrangements yet, but I know their calendar gets filled pretty quickly.
You can reach out and ask.
Yes.
You can contact them.
I will do that. Then we have two appointments, both paraprofessionals at WPS, Eileen LeBlanc and Autumn Jensen, and that's it for my report, thank you.
Any questions for the Superintendent? All right, Committee reports. Mr. Cava's not here, is anyone from the Building Committee who cares to report? All right, then we'll move on, Education Curriculum Committee, Michelle or Michael? Anything?
Um, so last, in our last meeting, um--
Moving around, keeping you on your toes.
Oh, right. Um, I believe when we spoke, when we had our meeting with Teresa, the next topic was going to be talking with the consultant about the multi-age classrooms, but because the meeting is potentially being moved, I'm not sure if that's happening, so I don't know if you knew--
That's, I believe, December. I think that went to December.
She's --
Yeah, I'm trying to think what next week.
November.
November?
Well, I'll figure out. We're gonna have something next week.
Okay, all right, doesn't sound like much right now. Anything on Advance, either one of you?
Yeah.
Valerie?
Valerie went to the last one.
Yeah, I went to the last two. Michelle and I share it, and the first meeting I went to was down in Danbury for the dedication of the Danny Tabado, the former director, a resource, not a resource center, actually, an educational center down in Danbury that's going to be revitalized, expanded, worked on by Ed Connection, Ed now called Ed Advance, and it will be basically for kids, middle and high school in that general area, I'm assuming more from the Danbury area, that will get special education needs. So it's an outplacing facility, which will be great, and hopefully might be available or useful to us. And then the second meeting I went to was just last Thursday. There's a new director there, very nice guy, and we have handouts, but I just want everyone to know that Ed Connect, Ed Advance, I'm sorry, is really a very vital part of the whole Litchfield County down into Danbury area, giving services. And the Region 12, if you can bear with me, the services we get are adult and continuing education, or equivalent, birth to three, which is very important, those services, community adult services, conferences, FRCS, school readiness, fingerprinting service, which is very important, inter-district student programs, instructional technology, minority recruitment, professional councils, school-age programs, school services, and general skills, 21 is a big one, team assessment slash support. So we get -- and transportation, we get a lot of services. We pay our dues, which are fairly small, it's about under 600 a year to be part of this, that's the new assessment, and they provide some good services. So I'm just gonna pass this around, and I'm glad that Michelle and I are sharing the duty.
Thank you, Val, for staying involved, keeping us informed, appreciate it. Any questions for Val? All right, thanks. I assume nothing for facilities, no one's here who's prepared to report?
I'm gonna meet you next week.
Okay, thank you. Finance, Valerie, anything?
We met prior to this, and we had a good conversation, a preliminary conversation about the possibility of perhaps having some kind of public forum that's up to Pat for our AgSTEM program, and helping look at some numbers, develop numbers, help with the public, understand some of those numbers, communicating with the public on occasion, as we've all received emails. And then we went to a regular agenda, in which we did the review for the October 31 financials, in which we have a 5.5 percent remainder of the budget, tracking accordingly to the previous year, actually a little bit better because we've had some grants come through. We went through the individual object codes, we examined the budget, I think, very thoroughly. I'm very pleased at the way we do business in the Finance Committee and with Bob's help. And then Bob has now set a new electrical generation number, in which we're gonna save lots of money. He does this yearly in his consortium.
Pardon?
Every three years.
Every three years, and so we save a lot of money that way. He and Michelle are gonna share with us, I'm sorry, Anthony is gonna share a website with all of us, where we can change our electrical generation at will and save vast sums of money. At least it'll buy dinner at GW. So look for that in your community email. And generation, not distribution, there's a difference. And then we looked at the 1 percent capital reserve fund, in which we have an available undesignated balance of $292,000, which is always good news, work is being done, paid for through this 1 percent fund. And then we looked at the lease, the $100,000 contribution we make to the elementary school lease, and we have now an undesignated, unused balance, for now, of $101,000 in that. So these are good cushions, if capital needs develop, if the elementary schools need some work, it's just good to have this in our back pocket. And that is it.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Valerie, anyone? Thank you, Val, appreciate it.
Let me get, let me down the house the --
[laughing]
Stay tuned.
He has saved as much as $150 a year. My feeling is they're gonna shut my electric off if I make any changes, but he seems to stand by his website.
If you could send your bill, if you could find it.
All right, okay.
I will email the link.
Long -- all right. Long-range planning, Alan?
Yes, we met last Wednesday, and we, for the most part, talked about our surveys. We're surveying teachers, students, and parents. The surveys for teachers and students will be beginning and end of November respectively, and parents, I think it was the end of Jul, end of Ju, in January, during January. So our, our survey results and the information that we can glean from those will be ready for us for our February meeting, for a February meeting. We have a meeting scheduled in January where we will be talking about international baccalaureate. We're just in the beginning stages of learning about it, studying it, that Teresa's gonna present to us the background she's found, as to whether that's a worthwhile curriculum for us to even consider pursuing. Then by February, we'll be able to review the survey results, which we will do, and we're planning to do, in conjunction with a facilitator who we will hopefully have hired by then. The surveys were our foray into our new strategic planning, and because they're a good way of getting input from the stakeholders in our school system, before we go to something along the lines of the forums that, for instance, we went through five years ago, four years ago, with Jonathan Costa, when we had the long-range planning, they did the strategic planning then. We're starting with this, and then working our way into what might be an abbreviated process, but still will eventually include parents, community members, taxpayers, property owners, administration, teachers, maybe even students this time, we didn't really have students last time, and of course Board of Education members. But our next step is to find a facilitator to guide us through this. We're hoping therefore to have that process begin in March, after we review the data and are introduced to our facilitator in February, and we might even be able to, hoping for a shorter timeframe. We went through six months with Jonathan Costa four years ago, maybe we can do this in three or four months this time, with his head start in this data. And several of us, especially Pat, had some suggestions, the people that I'm contacting, to determine a great facilitator, who's not Jonathan Costa, not that we didn't like him, we just want somebody new this time, and also who is someone we can afford. The other issues that we have on the plate are that we also wanted to survey administration, not just teachers as far as staff, and community, not just parents as far as non-participants in our school system. So that's something I'm looking into, I have a call into Panorama, to find out what kind of surveys they have specifically for community members, which are community beyond parents and families of students, and administrators, in other words, staff who are not teachers. And that's, that's where we are. Any questions?
Alan, how are the surveys delivered to whoever?
They're, they're done online, the Panorama survey is--
A parent portal, for example, to get in, or is it?
It's mainly, it's mainly done by user account, which is all anonymous. Everyone is invited by email, and they're issued a user ID, so that they're never identified. And then they log into the website based on that, answer the survey questions, and then they're compiled at Panorama. So even that information is protected from us here. What they do is they get email addresses and names from Karen Files, and that information is then put into their system. The affiliated usernames are generated based on that and linked by them, because they, obviously, as a third party, have no interest in anything that we would want to be anonymous about. And so the data is all handled there, except for the data we give them as far as, you know, email addresses and names, and obviously who they are. Are they a parent, are they a teacher, are they a student, so they know which survey to give them. And then they take the survey online, and it's all compiled, and we get it back that way.
Anyone else? Mike?
Just a question on the IB curriculum that you're investigating. Would that be to replace AP, or in addition to AP?
I think it would be in addition to. We're still learning about it. It, one of its advantages is that it's a very broad and general kind of qualifier, we should say, as opposed to AP, which is very specific, and obviously, there's a lot of them. So it might be an ability to compete as far as college and career applications with an IB certificate as opposed to APs. It might be a burden to have both. It might not be useful, because maybe a lot of families don't care about it, even though a lot of universities do now. But one of the things we're thinking of is in terms of the fact that it's very hard as our population decreases to offer more and more APs, which people often do to show achievement, obviously, and rigor, that it might be able to be demonstrated through an IB program, which would be more suited. Of course, the flip side of that is the expense and complexity of having an IB program, which perhaps only a few students would participate in. So that's what we're really looking into, is interest and feasibility and viability.
Alan, is that what you also, Alan mentioned?
Right. IB is not just, right, thank you, is not just a high school program, even though the baccalaureate certificate is, comes to your senior year. It's actually a curriculum which starts in the primary schools, all through middle school, and also high school. And one of the things that interested me about it, which is why I've asked for this, this research, is that Chapag always, already does a lot of the things that comprise an IB curriculum and IB education. A lot of the things that we do that are, have to do with the relationships and the process and the collaborative learning, and the individual, individualized education that we strive so hard to put into place over the last several years, is something that's, is, I believe, has got us poised and ready for something like IB. And as I've said before, in a way, a lot of these aspects are, at the moment, unqualifiable. We have so many issues as far as competing on a quantitative level, as far as standardized testing, and the number of AT, APs we have, and SAT scores, and all these different issues, which are very quantitative. But what's interesting about what we do here at Chapag, that we excel at from the beginning through graduation, is a very qualitative, organic, holistic approach to developing great citizens. And IB has a lot to do with that, too, yet it is, of course, an international standard, which therefore should be able to qualify something that, at the moment, is, is not, what's the word I'm looking for, is not generally rankable or explainable, simply an individual and interesting thing that I think might help. But as I said, we're still just the very beginning stages of looking at it.
You're gonna look into it and report to us. All right. Anything else, Valerie?
Well, I'm wondering with the survey that's going out, I mean, wouldn't it be wise to describe this program?
Oh, no, no, there's two separate things, two separate things.
I know that.
Yeah. We'll get to that. This is really, as I said, it's just that I was letting you know what we're up to in the Long Range Planning Committee, but it's really, we don't wanna cloud any issues as far as what the teachers, the parents, and the students think of their experience at Chapag now. We don't wanna add, what do you think of this, we might try, or this we might try. They really are two different things, and it's just a matter of our chronology, which is why I mentioned it at all, is that we're really focused primarily on developing our strategic plan, but at the same time, we're also looking into this, and that's what we're doing in our January meeting.
Oh, okay.
But don't, don't think of it as such a big thing at the moment, because we're really just looking into it, that we'd ever begin to survey anybody yet.
Okay, and then on your survey questions, just to understand, the facilitator is going to develop questions with the board? How is this all gonna come out, particularly in connection with the longstanding question of how do we plan around three small elementary schools, and how do we plan strategically with a new program like AgSTEM that's gonna take multiple years to get rolling?
Well, if you remember from the last time, a lot of these, a lot of these issues are the endpoint of the work. In other words, the survey now is not, you know, what would you like to do, would you like to do some AgSTEM, would you like to, would you like to do it through schools? That's kind of the endpoint, where we, where we end up with a lot of input that filters down, or up, as you might put it, to establishing two or three or four goals, the strategic goals. At this point, these surveys are really less in terms of, you know, positing views of the future, and simply surveys as to get a picture of what people like, don't like, need, are satisfied with, as to their experience at Chapag at the moment. So they're not, you know, they're, they're setting a baseline and taking a temperature of experience, as opposed to what will happen later, beyond the surveys, and will most likely be person-to-person forums, when you start developing ideas about, brainstorming ideas for improvement. Does that make sense?
But is it, is it correct that the company that you're hiring is gonna develop the questions?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, to answer the first part, I was trying to clear the IB and the other stuff out. The reason we handled, hired Panorama, is that they have several years of experience in compiling questions, appropriate and apt questions, to get the best data out of your constituents and your stakeholders, that they have, you know, tested and tried over many years, not only through research, but actually through, you know, other Connecticut school systems that use it. So those surveys were developed by Panorama, and we're using them.
So they have particular questions they will formulate relating to our specific situation?
No. They are specific questions that they have formulated, which gives a surveying body, which is very often the administration and Board of Education working together, insight into things that are going well in a school system, and things that need improvement in a school system. And that's a very generic thing on that level. And I can show you, I have the, I have the binder here, you can take a look at it afterwards, because what we did in our meeting is we went through the, all of the different questions that we have for students, staff, and parents and families. And in order to, for instance, let me just show you this section here, this is the teacher, the teacher's section. Now, you don't hand all of these, or do it, obviously, on the website, to the teachers, because this is hours of work, and you get what they call survey fatigue. So we selected, I think, five, four. Four of these, plus the State of Connecticut School Climate Survey, which we're beholden to, which will become part of this, as opposed to doing that separately, as it has been done. It'll now be administered through Panorama, through the website, so it's all together. So we, we chose four of these, obviously, there must have been about 20, 18 options, and we chose teaching efficacy, feedback and coaching, faculty growth mindset, and grit. And as you can come and take a look at this later, you'll see what the questions are that enable us to glean some insight as to what these people think in terms of, of, say, teaching efficacy. And then for parents, learning behaviors, school climate, school fit. For students, their rigorous expectations, student-teacher relationships, belonging, how they fit in at school, learning strategies, because we have, you know, with our, with our 20th century learning, we have an awful lot of, you know, reflexive and aware learning and thinking skills that we're teaching. So surveying a student on learning strategies is not completely unheard of. And of course, the climate survey. So you can look at these, see what the questions are, but these are the headings of the kind of things which are clearly generic, but give us insight into what we look for specifically in the surveys.
Thanks.
Anything else for Alan? All right, Alan, thank you.
Sure.
Negotiations, I will report as a member of the Negotiations Committee, that we are in current negotiations with the Teachers Union. Things are progressing. All right, 6.8, Policies and Bylaws, Michelle.
Um, we are meeting, and we have quite a few policies on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, so let's move along to Item 7, Segment Point 1, Second Reading Policy, 4115, Evaluation/Support. Michelle.
So we have quite a few policies on the agenda for tonight for a second reading. We, there was only, from the last meeting, there was only one suggested change, which comes in one of the later policies. So the way the policies, you'll see them as--
Michelle, excuse me, I'm sorry. For Stephanie's benefit, Stephanie, just so you didn't, in order to enact policy, it has to be read twice. It has to be enacted once by a vote of the board, and it has to come back. If there's any change, it has to be considered, and it has to be voted twice, that it becomes policy of the board. Okay? So this is for second reading. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. No, that's, that's a good point, I forgot. Yeah, and actually, I don't know if you're aware, but all of the policies of the board can be found on our website, under, if you go to the main Region 12 page, there's, I think it's Central Office, and then under Board of Education, there's a policy link, and so everything's there. It, there's a lot, you don't, don't feel like you need to sit and read it all, but--
But you're bound to it.
[laughing] But, but it's--
And it's searchable, too.
It is searchable, it is searchable, and everything we, we do actually is guided by policy, whether we know it or not. We don't often, aren't always aware of it.
Okay.
But it's there. You're welcome. So, so the policy, so we're starting with 4115, Evaluation and Support Program. The way you see it is the way it will, this is the cleaned-up version. If you wanted to see how this has changed from what our old policy was, you would need to go back into the old packet, but we did that last time, so I'm not going to repeat everything. There, there are no changes to this policy, this is what was recommended.
Is there a motion to approve for a second reading?
Second.
Michael, seconds. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, this one--
Scroll down.
Yeah, I know, I see it now. There wasn't supposed to be. Maybe, did we change this?
Step one.
No, no, no. Well, what, what we, what I had asked, I think we did actually, we did actually, I think, notice this. The only things that should, that were left yellow were the things that we had noticed, and after the first reading, which we did last time. So at the bottom, I think we had, we had forgotten to strike the, beginning with the 2014, we had, we had discussed eliminating that. So thank you. I didn't notice that when I was reviewing for tonight. I thought there was only one on a different policy.
Well, if the board votes, is this something you can be sure that the administration has what we pass, the correct version?
Um, yeah, well, because we can always go back.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Is every, it's been moved and seconded. Is there's any further discussion to prove this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, it's passed. Michelle, 7.2, Second Reading Policy, 5111.1, Foreign Exchange Students.
All right. This is also a second reading. There, there were no changes to this policy.
Do I have a motion?
Move to second reading. Second.
Yes, she got it. Stephanie, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, it passes unanimously. Next. 7.3, second reading policy 5112, students' age of attendance.
All right, same. This is a second reading. We had no suggested changes to this policy. So it is as, as presented.
Move to accept for a second reading?
Is there a second? Jen seconds. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Val.
Just to review, make sure we all get it straight. It's the first day of January. Five years of age or older. However, there's an option of not sending the child to school until the child is six years of age. Am I reading that right? The minimum is five by January 1, but you can hold back a six-year-old.
Um, does it say when they have to turn six?
That's the one, two...
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
Three.
Control of a six-years-old.
It's just kind of confusing. If we're demanding, are we saying we must educate a child January 1, five, but the parent doesn't?
Yeah, they're saying that they have the option to, to hold the child and start kindergarten a year later, if they so choose. Which, which happens.
Anything else?
I think this falls, it's, it's like part of the, because it falls with the attendance. I think a parent is not, I don't want to say, you know, a child's not truant until that point. The, the parent has the option, at which point then I guess the state's going to track them down.
And I'm assuming the first day of January has been kind of a movable feast over the years, right? It's been like September 1 and October. Now, is it uniformly throughout the state, January 1?
Oh, I think the entire state is the same. That state statute, they keep discussing moving it, but then they don't.
Okay.
And that's why this policy was updated to reflect.
All right, anything else on this, 7.3? This is to approve policy 5112, students' age of attendance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, thank you. It passes unanimously. 7.4, second reading policy 6146, graduation requirements. Michelle.
All right, this, we, we talked a little bit more about this policy last time. Just as, talking about how the state requirements sort of meld with ours. We also did a lot of cleanup on this policy because as we were moving out of the block and into the seven-period schedule, we had years of graduation requirements that we were able to clean off, because those students have now graduated. So this policy reflects the latest laws. I know that there, there's discussion of some things changing, but at least we're up to date with what's on the books now.
Is there a motion?
Move to accept for, for a second reading.
All right, Michael's got the second. Is there any further discussion? Valerie?
Yeah, the, at least the way it came through my computer, there's a, more than a dangling part of simple. Students in grades 5, 8, and 10 shall annually take a statewide mastery examination in... Got to finish the sentence.
That's, we're on graduation.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute.
We're on 6146?
Yeah.
I think you're looking at 6146.2.
Oh, I am into the point twos. I'm sorry.
All right, back to 6146. Is there anything further?
Wait a minute.
But, but remember that, because we're going to get to that and we're going to need to fix that hanging.
Sorry.
Anthony?
I'm sorry.
Michelle, just a clarification. So it says for the class of 2018 and those thereafter. What about the graduation requirements for the classes before that? How are they handled? Does the old policy stay in, stay in effect, more or less, or the old criteria stay into effect until 2018?
Um, yes, because that would just be this, that would just be this current class, and they're already enrolled and signed up, so...
Okay.
So, yeah, so this is for moving forward.
All right.
Anything else? All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve policy 6146, graduation requirements for a second reading. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 7.5, second reading policy 6146.2, statewide proficiency slash mastery examinations. Michelle.
Uh, yeah, this is also for a second reading. This was, we just cleaned up some of the old, you know, changes in the state testing to reflect what's actually happening. So Valerie, what did you find? What do we need to fix?
Uh, okay, the end of this, the first paragraph is a dangling sentence.
In science, I think. Students in grades 5, 8, and 10 shall annually take a statewide mastery exam in science.
Correct. All right, let me find out, because that is part of the part that was edited. Actually, if I look back in the last packet, I would be able to see what that sentence was.
Well, is there any other corrections other than that?
But I can...
Well, with that noted, was there anything further?
On that policy? No, I just, I...
Is there a motion to approve it?
We can, we can fix it, or I could bring it back for another...
No, if it's the addition of one word.
Yeah.
Do you agree that it's the word "science"?
Well, Alan's going to look at, because it probably is. Trying to find...
Hmm, hmm.
Yay, ding ding ding. Yep. Thank you.
Valerie?
Um, so we're just going to add "science" here without having it go back?
I don't think that's, yeah.
Do you have...
It was, it was in the original, and so when she was pulling out the, it was, there was the, the yellow and the strikes, it just got, it just got cut.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept, so now someone...
No, we don't have, we don't have a motion on this policy, do we?
Um...
We don't have a...
Motion to accept for a second reading if, with the addition of "science" at the end of the first paragraph.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Rebecca. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Valerie?
I, I just want to talk about, and I know this is something the state is mandating, I guess, I don't think we can opt out, but the special education function in testing. In that we have to hold 95% of the total school population and its subgroups, which includes special ed kids, will have to participate. And it prohibits any special ed student, unless I'm reading it wrong, not even to have out-of-level testing as an option.
There are, there are checklists for certain kids who are, you know, severely disabled. And now that it's on the computer, the exams, there are less, what's the word that I'm looking for? Less accommodations. And we really haven't had a problem at this point, so I think we're okay. And one of the things about having such a small population per grade is that in order to hit that 95%, you have to have an N of 20 students. And so we don't hit that until we get to sixth grade, when everybody comes together.
Oh.
So it hasn't been a problem, and, you know, we are very aware when kids need special accommodations. I think we're very sensitive to that.
Because it just says significant cognitive disabilities. It seems to me that's a little bit too specific for a range of special ed, but, okay, I understand.
Okay, anything further on this? Is there a motion on 7.5?
I think we did that.
We did.
We did that.
I'm sorry. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you. It passes unanimously. Finally, item 7.6, second reading policy 9326, videotaping at Board of Education meetings. Michelle.
Okay, this is also up for a second reading, and we had a suggestion of language, which you can see in yellow in number 5. And just to clarify, this, this policy is a Cabe policy that is used in, I don't know exactly how many other districts, but it's, it's used in other districts. It's a sample policy that we got from Cabe. They actually had three different samples for us to look at, and the committee chose, chose this one. It allows the use of electronic recording devices, video and otherwise. It just...
State statute allows it.
State statute allows it, and so does our policy. It just asks that people who wish to record the meetings do so by informing the chairperson prior to the meeting, and then the chairperson will inform the board that we are being recorded, so that nobody feels that, that they're being recorded without their knowing or on the sly. So that is the gist of this policy.
All right, any questions, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve for a second meeting? A second reading? And it was a second meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Valerie?
I just want to point out yet again, and I'm actually going to quote from the statute that was sent to me by Mr. Buonniato, sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, that it's a "may". It's not, it's an allowance that we're giving, a privilege. It's something that is not a right. The reading says "may", and it's repeated several times over. Happy to do so, but indeed, reading at the beginning of our meeting, telling everyone when there is videotaping, particularly by someone that's not associated with the Board of Ed, every meeting is important.
That's what the policy says. Is there anything else? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, it passes. Thank you.
Um, just a, just a comment. We're going to, I guess we'll have to think about how, how we want to make sure the public is aware that we're requesting they let us know that they're recording before the meeting starts, whether we want to have a sign made or printed at the beginning of the agenda, or to have you for, for at least a couple of months...
Announce it.
Announce it, so that people are aware of the new policy.
Mr. Buonniato's here, so he's aware of the new policy. Mr. Buonniato, you know, you need to inform me before each meeting that you intend to tape the meeting, and then I'll inform the board. That's all that's requested. All right?
And, and if I might add my, on to my comments, the reason why I'm sensitive to this is that I've had people mention the fact that they are seeing videotapes that aren't necessarily part of what we do here officially. And they're seeing our conversation, but they're not seeing what we're looking at, so they're not fully informed. Hopefully, because we're distributing in a public forum, a lot of our documents, people can see the whole story. Whereas private videotaping goes into someone's home for conversation, not knowing what our information is upon which we have our conversations, our discussions, our decisions. So that's why I'm sensitive to it.
I, if I may, I don't disagree with your being sensitive to it. I appreciate that. It's just, you know, under the law, it's, if you, if we choose to be here, that's, it's allowed. For the, for the most part, it's allowed. So we have to deal with it the best we can. Rebecca?
Just in terms of getting the information out, would it be appropriate to just have a simple statement included on our posted agendas? That if you choose to record the meeting, please notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting, and we can reference the policy, and if it's electronic, we can even link to it.
That's a good idea.
That is a good idea.
Thank you. That's why you're so smart. Anything else? All right, we're on to 8.1, first reading of policy 4152.6, personnel... I think it's personnel, isn't it? Personnel leaves.
Personal leaves. Yeah, this is, this is Family Medical Leave Act. So this is, it looks like it's a new policy. It's not highlighted. It's not, we did have one. You can go back to our website to look at it. It was, I think, four sentences long. We haven't updated it since 1998. So this is, Cabe gave us the full version of what we need to have on the books in order to be compliant with the FMLA. So it really doesn't say, it's not very different, but we don't really have a choice in this. So if you have questions, I can try to field them, but...
I'm not sure if there's a real concern about my question in regards to the policy and how it's enacted, but I noticed that under the Connecticut General Statutes, it cites the applicability of statutes to civil unions and parties to a civil union. And I'm not entirely sure about this, but I'm not sure that civil unions are even legal in Connecticut anymore. Back when gay marriage was put through, they basically said, we're going to upgrade anybody who has a civil union to marriage. So I don't know if that's something that needs to be on there or not, so that maybe, again, it's small, but it just, in terms of if we're tidying it up, we might want to just check with legal and see. There might be something in the statute that addresses that, and that's why it needs to stay, but that's jumped out at me.
Yeah, I will ask about that.
I think it's, I think it may be a good point. I think, I think the references have been eliminated since the passage of the Marriage Act.
Unless, unless there's some sort of like circling back that it, it does, that it refers to.
But you'll ask counsel.
But I'll ask them. Yeah. But I will ask to have that. There was a bit of time, so our audit, we had the revisions done for us. These are getting close to a year old. Not quite yet, but pretty close. We're at the end of, of the packets of, of updated policies, so that, some time has passed. So I will check to make sure that that is still what it should read.
If I may, that's pretty good, to be, we're all through the policies and they're only a year, everything in a year. I mean, that's good.
Well, I think so.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Really? I think so.
I know. No, you know what? I have to say, I really need to, since we're, we're talking about this, give a lot of kudos to Teresa, who has been keeping, in and amongst all of the audit work, which this was a whole pile of audit work, she's been keeping us up to date on what's been coming through. So if we were to go through another audit right now, I think they would find we're, we're pretty in compliance, so. It's very exciting, and it'll make our work a lot easier once we're finished with the audit. We do have a few things still hanging out there, because we keep, we've been waiting for the state to finish up things that they, they were supposed to be working on, and they haven't. But anyway, we're, we're into the home stretch here.
I'm sorry, do we have a motion on 8.1? No motion. Is there a motion? Or any further questions? Valerie?
A motion to accept for first reading.
It's been moved and seconded. Anything further? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, that passes. Lastly, item 9.1, revisions to board and meeting schedule for 2016-17. Dr. Casantino.
Yes, as I was going through the calendar with Debbie, we thought it would be best to move the November 21st meeting to November 14th. The week of the 21st is the Monday before Thanksgiving, and people get very busy. So that is my recommendation.
Is that the only change on this calendar?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and you mentioned another retreat. When is that going to be?
It's in March.
Oh, so we'll think about that tomorrow.
No, no, March 13.
Seems to me we've been meeting like every other day. I mean, do we have enough to substantiate a November 14th meeting?
Yes.
Really?
All right.
I'll move to accept the revised Board of Education meeting calendar.
All right, Rebecca, seconds? It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No movement.
All those in favor, say aye.